Okay. This is the zoning board of appeals for the town of Sherburne. It is the continued hearing on the so-called Coolidge Crossing 40B project off Coolidge Street in Sherburne. A number of materials came in since we last met on the 28th of April. I did want to start tonight, though, with letting the applicant walk us through their list of requested waivers. You submitted an updated list. And I believe the 10th. And Stephanie, if Jane, can you give Stephanie the screen so she can walk us through them quickly? And then we'll return. We will return to all the materials that were submitted. Because there are a number of them to cover.
Oh, I actually, I don't have it pulled up on my screen here. I have to go off my office platform to pull out my voice heard. So Matt, do you have the waiver list handy?
I believe so. Give me one moment and I will.
Okay, if not, I can log on to my system and pull it up.
Yeah, it's this quirky thing that if I do it through my office platform, I have no volume. So.
All right. Do you use Citrix? Yeah.
Yeah.
Our Citrix hates Zoom as well.
Yeah.
We have to log out every time we run a Zoom call. All right. Stephanie, you have the mic and Matt's going to be your ABC assistant.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And what I'm going to do right now is to walk the board through the requested updated waiver list that was submitted on the 10. And also to somewhat explain it out when I go through the individual waivers, I'll also somewhat point this out. But sometimes you may hear people called things such as process waivers, and that's simply because under chapter 40B, as you know, the ZBA is issuing the master permit. And so there are certain provisions within the zoning bylaw or maybe another general bylaw that that makes reference to somebody being a permitting authority for something. And so since it's all subsumed within the master permit, we I tend to just highlight it. So it may be somewhat like I said, is a process process waiver rather than really a substantive waiver. So I'll try to point that out where it kind of applicable through this. And just on the first page here, just explains that the updated waiver list, there had been a section on there previously that had just said that that seemed to have caused confusion that we were seeking a waiver from all local bylaws. It was just, we were seeking a waiver for applicable bylaws as further defined herein. So Matt, if you can move to the next page, which is kind of gets into the meat of it. The first waiver request we've sought is actually from the definitions. And so the way that the zoning bylaw is written is sometimes the definitions are kind of weaved into other aspects. So with respect to the definitions in section 1.5 of your zoning bylaw, we've requested just a waiver of the definitions of two terms. The term multi-dwelling slash multi-dolly buildings. And then parking space, and it'll get into this slightly later. But the term multi-dwelling or multi-dolly buildings, it's by definition, it's prohibited in every district save the EA district. And the Coolidge Crossing project is Residence A. And so we would ask for that waiver of the definition that prohibits multi-dolly buildings in any other district other than the EA district. As you know, the project consists of three residential buildings, as well as a clubhouse building, all on a single lot. And I stated in the reasoning, basically, the restrictive definition of multi-dolly buildings is not a local need that exceeds the local need for affordable housing in Sherburne. Similarly, for the parking space waiver that is requested from the definition, your bylaw defines it to be by the dimensions 20 feet by eight point 20 by eight and a half feet for angled parking. And as we've discussed in previous hearings, and as had been suggested to us that we reduced certain of the parking spaces that weren't adjacent to sidewalk to 18 feet by eight and a half feet. Moving on to the next section of your bylaw where we seek a waiver, section 1.6 prohibited uses. And that's some of the catchall that you see in zoning bylaws that any building that's not expressly allowed, permitted, or exempted is therefore prohibited. And so we seek this waiver to permit the residential uses, structures and accessory uses and structures within the residential A. So that would be the the three, the three buildings, the clubhouse, and then all the affiliated parking landscaping, the gym, the pool, management leasing office. Again, this is submitted within the 40B process. And it's our contention that the need for affordable housing outweighs the local need for this kind of catchall provision of your zoning bylaw. If we go to the next page, Matt. Somewhat similar to section 1.6, section 3.4 basically provides that except for permitted under 3.4, no building structure or land is to be adapted, constructed, or used for any purpose other than the schedule of uses, section 2.2 of your bylaw. So again, this, I'm saying this several times, it seems like. But as I said, the local bylaws just happen to catch this in multiple spaces, multiple places, excuse me. So again, this is simply to acknowledge that we're asking the board to waive that and to allow the project as shown on the project plans. Again, residential 120 units within three buildings and one clubhouse building and accessory uses and structures. Then we get to section 3.2, which is somewhat the meat of it. It's your table of use regulations. And within the Residence A, apartment use is a permissible use, but multi-dwelling uses are prohibited. And so we seek a waiver to the extent that the the three residential buildings would would think fall within a multi-dwelling scenario, and therefore we request a waiver from section 3.2. The next page, please. Under sections 4.1 and 4.2 of the zoning bylaw, that's where we get the dimensional regulations. The project, it really does meet all of the dimensional regulations that are set out in section 4.12, with the exception of building height. The bylaw prohibits or restricts building height to two and a half stories, 35 feet. And we have the each of the residential buildings are proposed to be four-story buildings. And they're 50 plus feet tall. And we request this waiver and it's supported by, we feel that the additional height on this property, it's, it doesn't that the the size of the property, the location of the buildings and the design of them are all appropriate for a waiver of the otherwise applicable two and a half story. The site itself is 15.2 acres. And while we don't have the site plans right here, I'm sure you recall, though, that the buildings are set back very far from the street. So the view from the street isn't that you have looming structures on it. Similarly, the design, the three-building design, it's minimized the impervious surface areas. And so we feel that from a planning perspective, as well as kind of an architectural perspective, that the waiver is warranted. It allows the project to have density without being on a too small lot and without being too tall. The next waivers are under the use regulations. Oops, sorry. I'm sorry, Matt, could you go to the next page?
Right.
Okay, under 4.36, basically, under the bylaw, it allows for each dwelling structure on a property that you have the adequate area. So since this is the residential A, one acre zoning, you would need 120 acres. We seek a waiver to allow the the density of the project, again, 120 units. And what that comes out to based on the site is slightly under eight units per acre, which is a pretty low density when it comes to multifamily uses. And here to the the need for affordable housing, you know, outweighs the local need for the restrictions of the density as defined otherwise in 4.36. And then the next waiver that we've requested would be under section 5.13. And as I kind of prefaced my my talk here this evening, I think this is more somewhat along the lines of a process waiver. Because under section 5.13, the planning board otherwise would approve the parking area plans. Here, what we're seeking is a waiver, basically, just to have, just to confirm that the parking area plans are those as shown on the site plans. And it's part of the master permit that the zoning board will issue. Similarly, you know, kind of part and parcel with that, the I would point out again, as I did in the reasoning column here on the chart, that certain of the parking areas have been reduced in size, as previously have been discussed with the zoning board, which has allowed a decrease in the impervious area for the site. From there, we move on to sections 5.2.3 and 5.2.6. And those are relative to regulations within residential districts. And on my chart here, my shorthand, I realize when I was reading it, it's a little bit unclear. But what was required under your zoning bylaw is that there only be one permanent ground sign and building sign. And the size limits for the ground sign is two square feet, no higher than six feet off the ground. And for the building signs, it's limited to one square feet, no more than five feet from the ground. And it also restricts temporary signage. And we're requesting a waiver from the board to to waive those limitations. The again, this is a large site. And the site plan shows a monument signage, a proposed monument signage near the front of the property. But that would be greater than two square feet total. It's a it's a 120-unit project. And I think as a matter of wayfinding for people accessing the site, that would not be desirable. Similarly, the each of the buildings would require signage to identify, again, for wayfinding purposes, if you will, for a guest coming onto the property to do to figure out which building, one, two, or three they're headed to. And then in terms of additional signage, the project, these will be submitted with the final plans. But it would include parking, parking signage potentially, signage to direct people where how to access the parking areas. And then lastly, there would be, we're asking for a waiver for temporary signage during the construction that would have a construction and initial lease up information. Again, those can be shown on the on the final plans and subject to consistency with the with the board's decision. And then under you can just go to the next one now. This is just for informational purposes. This really isn't a waiver request. Then from there, I move on to the out of the zoning bylaws. So now we're within the general bylaws of the town. And under chapter 22, for driveways, again, this is another of the of a process oriented, I think. And there may be some substance, but I think it's more of a process oriented waiver request. Under chapter 22, section 1, it provides that a driveway shall not be constructed or altered without a written permit from the DPW director. And further, it provides that there's no foundation or building permits that issue for a new build, for a new dwelling unless that driveway permit is issued. And that the DPW director can impose conditions on that that will reasonably protect the streets or driveways, streets or ways. And here too, this is, the driveway would be approved as part of the master permit. But we want to make certain that the any conditionings applicable to that are those that are set out within the comprehensive permit itself and not subject to later discretion of the DPW to impose additional restrictions. So again, this is more of a process waiver because recognizing that the comprehensive permit is the master permit for the project. And the next section of the general bylaws, still dealing with driveways, would be section 2. So I, section 1 was was kind of the general one. Section 2, it describes, Matt, if you want to flip the page there. It describes the the minimum standards for driveways in Sherburne. And here there is a minor substantive waiver that we are seeking. And it's a specific design waiver set out in the required. We have the width, the weight, the turn around. But if you pay attention to the maximum grade and and radii there, there is a portion of the project driveway. And it's the portion of the driveway that is past building three and past the building three parking area that the grade of that is it's the emergency act, the emergency vehicle connector, if you will, piece. And there's a 10% grade there. There are no dwellings. The that portion isn't meant for general traffic in any event. And the grade of the access connector piece does meet NFPA fire access standards, but it doesn't meet the 8% standard that's set out in section 2. So here too, we think that a waiver is warranted. The the local need for that that maximum radii, it's really not met here because you're not going to have the general public traveling on that portion. It's a small portion and it does adhere to fire access standards, which is essentially what that small portion of the driver past building three. The next section of the general bylaws that we're seeking a waiver on are going is under section, pardon, under chapter 25. So Matt, if you want to flip the page. And this too, I would characterize as a process waiver. It provides for a stormwater permit from the planning board where when the activity is involves alteration of one or more acre. And so that the proposal that we have is that the stormwater just be managed in accordance with the DEP stormwater policy and its technical guidance to the extent that they're applicable. And then stormwater obviously would also be managed in accordance with the EPA stormwater construction permit. This has previously been reviewed, our stormwater by your peer review, and it's been found adequate. So therefore, we would, we would ask for this, you know, to be confirmed that this this process waiver, you know, that we not go through this process with the planning board for a stormwater management permit. And from there, we're into the discrete Board of Health regulation waivers that we've sought. The first ones are under part three of the of the Board of Health Regulations, sections 3.1, 3.2, and 14, I believe. This requires an environmental health impact report when you have more than 10 dwelling units that are proposed. Again, we're just seeking this process waiver that the zoning board waived this requirement. And the project itself has no onsite water sewer and impacts to drainage and stormwater. As I said, have already been reviewed and basically signed off by your peer reviewers as being adequate and comprehensive. And so we simply ask for this process waiver of this environmental health impact report. With respect to bedrock disruption, that would be section 10, so parts AD in part three of the Board of Health Regulations. And it, what the regulation requires is that the Board of Health have a permit for bedrock disruption greater than 10 cubic yards. We don't know for certain that we would need this. But in to the extent that there is bedrock disruption, that would be greater than 10 cubic yards. We're seeking a waiver of it. And what we're only really seeking waivers is the the advanced notification. So the permit, the the regulation requires that when you have 10 or more cubic yards, there's advanced notice to neighbors within a quarter mile. And then that you provide information to of the blasting agent that's to be used to the Board of Health. And it prohibits perchlorate as a blasting agent. And so what we have proposed is one, obviously, that the master permit, i.e. the comprehensive permit, regulate this. And that should the project require blasting of greater than 10 cubic yards, that it be conditioned such that the applicant would agree to notify the zoning board with a copy to the Board of Health agent at least 10 days in advance. And that it will not use perchlorate and that notice, written notice would be sent to neighbors within a quarter mile, you know, consistent with how the regulations. So it's a process waiver. The next two waiver requests deal with drainage under the Board of Health Regulations. And again, this is in part three, sections 12.1 and 12.5. Under 12.1, the the regulation provides that it limits stormwater runoff to change more or less than 10% for volume runoff of the total rate of runoff for subdivision projects. And it's unclear that this would even be applicable because this is not a subdivision project. But to the extent it is applicable, we're seeking a waiver. There is no local need that would that would require the standard. Instead, that the project will be adhering to DP stormwater standards. And again, Tetra Tech has reviewed our stormwater and has approved the same. With respect to section 12.5, it requires that soil infiltration rates are measured by in situ field board, field borehole test. Again, we've asked for that to be waived. The project has utilized infiltration rate design methods in accordance with the DEP stormwater standards. And again, this this relates to the matter's been peer reviewed and it's really not a local need that would stand in the way of the need for affordable housing. And then those are the last of our Board of Health requested waivers. And then from there, we move on to wetland waivers that is really just limited to two, I believe. The first one that we've talked about a lot during these hearings is the no alteration zone. Under section 5.2, it establishes a 50-foot no alteration zone, which is essentially the inner buffer zone, if you will. And we were seeking a waiver. The project will still be subject to, obviously, an order of conditions under the Wetlands Protection Act. And again, the project, just as a reminder, there, there is no work within the wetlands. It's all, it's only a buffer zone project. And furthermore, within the the local, the no alteration zone, the project doesn't have any structure within that. But it's it's limited to grading drainage utilities. And then also kind of post-construction maintenance landscaping as shown on the project plans. And as the board may recall, that Tetra Tech had looked at this waiver request and had considered and had suggested that a useful analogy to apply would be the the 10% on the riverfront area under the Wetlands Protection Act, if less than 10% has been impacted. And civil design group went back and looked at that and confirmed that the total non-stormwater impacts to the no alteration zone are in fact less than 10% of the total no impact zone on the property. And so therefore, we're seeking a waiver from the wetlands of the local wetlands bylaw, section 5.2. The project adheres to the proposed standard that Tetra Tech has set forth. And and I believe that the commission has somewhat accepted that. And here too, the the need for affordable housing, the protection of the inner buffer zone for any of the the posts, the grading drainage utility work, doesn't seem to override the need for affordable housing. And then our last wetlands, our last waiver request, actually, is the local wetland bylaw, section 5.3, relative to fill standards. And what the with the local bylaw requires is that you have clean fill. And basically, that it's that it's brought to the site and that the the Conservation Commission is notified in advance. So again, here too, this would be the zoning board, since it's a comprehensive permit. And the only waiver that the applicant is seeking on this front is just the the notice period. So the local bylaw has a seven-day notice period. And we're requesting that it be reduced just from a a construction standpoint, it's not always possible to have seven days notice that that you're going to have a batch of fill. It's going to be pre-tested, but you may not have that seven-day notice period. So we're just seeking, is a very minor to minimalist waiver of of the seven-day notice requirement. And unless I've missed something, I think that is the extent of the waivers that are sought for this project. If the board has any questions or wants me to.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Ms. Kiefer. Board members, questions on those? I mean, it seemed like a familiar list to me.
Question on the building height. For some reason, I was, and I don't have the drawings in front of me, but I was under the impression that they were three-story structures.
They are.
I'm sorry.
Stephanie is trying to slip in another story.
Sorry about that.
I knew we couldn't trust her.
I had another question. This has to do with stormwater management and the disturbance to the no alteration zone. One of the comments from Tetra Tech was that, I'll just read it. Says, has committed to a re-vegetation program to upgrade the areas of the no alteration zone. So the applicant has agreed to that. Is that a, is that, is there in fact been an agreement?
Yes, we have agreed to do that. I think we listed 50 plants to be planted on those various areas behind buildings, one and two.
So I mean, when I look at, when I looked at the landscape planting plan, I just see little little areas of said re-vegetated or whatever. Is there a a more descriptive better description of what's actually proposed for this re-vegetated area?
Hi, I'm a Pat Kelly from Hawk Design. I'm the landscape architect on the project. It's okay, I'd like to address that.
Please.
So the plans that we are showing, as Roy had noted, we're showing four areas. I'm sorry, I think five areas where we have both native shrubs and native trees being planted within the wetland setback. And we have a list on the on the planting plan that notes what species these could be and the size. on the planting plan that notes what species these could be and the size that they would be. So we have a native tree list and a native shrub list. Also, behind buildings one, two, and three, we have a restoration area, which is a restoration seed mix. And this is comprised comprised of native grasses, herbaceous perennials and shrubs. And I can actually give the numbers for that. Within the zero to 50, we're providing 16,550 square feet of restoration. And within the 50 to 100, we're providing 12,897 square feet of restoration seeding. So.
So but in general, are you restoring any area that gets disturbed during construction within the 50-foot zone?
Yes, so the area within the 50-foot zone is 16,550 square feet. And that will be a mix of the native grasses, herbaceous perennials, shrubs and trees, native trees.
Okay. And the only exception would be the grass areas adjacent to the building?
Yeah.
Some of it, I think, does intrude into the 50-foot zone.
Some of it does intrude to the 50-foot zone, but we need to keep space clear around the building in order to maintain the the buildings and access anything in the rear if there's an issue with the building. But we try to keep a buffer between all buildings and the wetland area.
Mr. Chair, if I could just generally comment, this is Roy speaking. Anything in the buffer that we disturb will be replicated in some form, whether it's through grasses or plant material.
And is somebody on from Tetra Tech? Sean or one of his colleagues?
I didn't see them. I looked I looked at the list of participants and I didn't see anybody, either Sarah or Sean.
Okay, well, my question to them will be, and Gina, we can follow up later. This all sounds great and narrative, but we just need to see it written down somewhere so we can bolt it into our into our documents.
Mr. Chairman, I believe it's on our plan, isn't it, Patrick?
Yes, it should have been on the plans that were submitted for the 428 meeting.
Okay, great. All right, so all I need to do is confirm with Tetra Tech that what you say is on those plans. And Ron, will that have answered your question?
I think so, pretty much, yeah.
Okay. You're allowed you're allowed to have another question.
I don't have any at this time.
Okay. Other questions from the general public on the waivers? Generally, I know we have some other things to talk about, but if there's something that somebody went past unaware of that today, wait a second, what that's what what's that about? We're glad to sort of try to walk people through it now.
Michael Lesser has his hand up and Daryl.
Okay. Michael Lesser, first up.
Michael.
Michael, just half a second, Gina, I can't see the hand, so I think you need to make me co-host. Sorry, go ahead, Michael.
Michael Lesser, Conservation Commission. Though sent in belatedly but passed on, we as to this last topic about the landscaping plan. We in the in the in the memo that was just sent today, we do comment that we appreciate that there's been some some movement on doing some more work on how the vegetation of the the re-vegetation of the buffer zone is proposed. We do we do say that those sort of little clumps of areas that were being referred to where there's some some vegetation being going on as well as some of the grasses that we felt we reacted that those are small little clumps that could be larger in the no alteration zone. They could be contiguous with the resource area as well as each other. And that it's so that we would think that more could be done and still keeping that minimum amount of area that is needed around the buildings. And possibly more could be done in terms of some of the other landscaping and and how that's actually going to be managed. But and so but as we wrote, we're the Tetra Tech response is the fact that what to what extent condition should be written that there'll be landscaping for wetlands values in that area? And to what extent that should be best handled during the NOI, the permitting process before the commission to get an order of conditions? And the Tetra Tech suggests that the that more of that detail could be worked out during that hearing. And so the question is, is how to write your condition so that it's, I think, as they say there, that it knows it notices it indicates that work will be done on this. I don't want there's that dancing, that fine line between what you're doing for the bylaw and what we do later on how you word your conditioning on the landscape plan so that it's not overly specific. So that if we come back with some refinements and improvements for that during the NOI process, that that doesn't there's no conflict between what we do and what the ZBA conditions.
I I think there won't be, if I'm hearing you correctly, Michael, because we're only going to stand in the Conservation Commission's shoes to the extent that they are exercising their local discretion under local rules. To the extent that you have jurisdiction over and the ability to influence their their plantings under your state rules under the NOI, we've got nothing to say about it. That's your subject matter jurisdiction of when we're not ruling on it here. So the the line is purely a matter of are you relying on your local rules or are you relying on the state rules?
I guess we have some leeway to do this date, but I guess the question is how to, right? I mean, I guess we're just going on record that the that that some of what the plan is there is is helpful, but it could be more that more can be required in terms of those those areas of vegetation. And to what extent you can word something more more generally that says that more can be done in those areas, but right, how to because that's the problem of doing the NOI after the not in parallel. That whole issue where maybe we would have had a lot more work done on this by now. But we didn't do that because of that particular court ruling. Yeah, I but I guess all I could say is that we can go on record that that we think that there could be more done on terms of the landscaping work to deal with the wetland issues.
Mr. Fitch, I wonder if 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 maybe a good way to handle this would be to word our whatever condition to say that what we want them to do on that re-vegetation is without prejudice to whatever rights the Conservation Commission has under the state rules and regulations because I mean, it's it's easy to say that because we have no right to tell them what to do under those regulations.
Right, right, I agree. It's a good approach.
Okay. So it's a I think that's how we'll handle that with Michael. Now, Lori, Daryl, you're next.
Hey, Daryl Beardsley, Chair of the Board of Health. And I'm mostly going to, well, a little bit address what was just mentioned, but also the response to the Board of Health's comments that were submitted. And overall, we
Daryl, then that's jumping around because we're talking about waivers right now. We definitely are going to loop back to all the back and forth that's happened since the last meeting.
Okay, I mean, it does pertain to all the waivers, but I I can hold off, not a problem.
Okay, great, thank thank you. Julia Doctor.
Yes, hello. I am a local Realtor in a 17 Meadowbrook neighborhood. So just have a question. Is it any agreement or anything somewhere written about connection of neighborhood to town water and town sewage?
Because we're going to talk about that in a few minutes, too. It's not it's not technically within the waivers. But 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 hold that thought because we're definitely going to get there. Mr. Carlucci, you have your hand up.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, just in response to your comment about Tetra Tech in their April 29 letter, they had addressed the revised landscape plan. And it says that the the plan includes a site planting plan and plant schedule identifying species and size of proposed trees as well as a range of seed mixes. The plan identifies areas where mitigation planting is proposed to re-vegetate existing cleared areas within the the NAZ. In our opinion, the plan is responsive to the commission's comment and serves as a suitable basis for board decision on the comprehensive permit and subsequent detailed review by the commission under the Wetlands Protection Regulations.
Well, who needs Tetra Tech and we have you?
Well, it's easy to read somebody else's comment.
All right, but thank you very much for for bringing that up. That that's that's definitely right on point, appreciate it. Okay, other for for other and further comments on the waivers or questions on the waivers themselves? Okay. I before we move into the 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 servant volley of the back and forth since last meeting, I wanted to make the same speech I made I made on another 40B, which is the Stowe Speech. I don't think I've heard too many things in the course of our hearings from people saying this project should be denied. But to the extent that people are advocating for this board to deny the project. And remember, everybody, our three choices are granted, granted with conditions or deny, those are our only three choices. Then, under the Stowe case, we would have to have evidence before the board of of a material that it's more likely than not that there would be a material risk to public health if the project proceeded. So that's a that's a that's a high hurdle to get over. But but it can be done, it was done in the Stowe case and it's sometimes done in other cases. Little harder here because usually it relates to the water and sewer. And here, if this project goes ahead, they'll be using public water and public sewer. But I just wanted to remind people that if you have a secret pile of evidence or master expert that is going to give some killer input on how the stormwater here is going to be a threat to everybody in town, that really has to hit the table immediately. When we close the hearing, there can't be any more evidence. So I I think that all the neighbors have very politely and persistently been doing a good job of raising all their concerns. And we appreciate and respect that. But if anyone has a Perry Mason moment planned, you better better pull it out of your pocket tonight. Because this this hearing will be will be closing soon. So having said that, I'll shut up on the on the Stowe issue. I think the next issue was we we had a lot of back and forth after the meeting of the 28th. The the Meadowbrook neighbors sent in another letter suggesting I think five particular changes. The the applicant responded to that. And I think there were three letters going back and forth, Stephanie and the letter of the 12. And so maybe Stephanie, I'll ask you to sort of walk us through that because that way we can cover Mr. Thompson's and Miss Wiedemeyer's requests, but also your response all in one fell swoop. And then if then if they think you're unfairly characterizing what they asked for, obviously, they can raise their hand and we'll we'll get it corrected.
Okay, very good. I as I read their letter, they they've acknowledged that we did agree that there would be a restriction for the back end of the fire access road, that there there would not be any, you know, be limited to emergency access, which again, we we confirmed that agreement that we that we previously said that that back portion will be restricted for emergency vehicular access. But from there, I think that the comment letter went a little farther, asking for commitments that that there be a permanent restriction as to accessing Meadowbrook Road. And again, as we point out in our letter, that we don't own that property. That's the the Pulte 104 Coolidge Street. And so within the comp permit, the board has no authority to impose restrictions on a third party's private property. And we we've agreed we're amenable to a condition that the back of our property that there be a gate and that it be restricted to emergency vehicular access, but we can't agree to anything greater than that. And and there were two parts to the first comment. There was a part B that I think was asking that it that there be a gate installed before any building permits issue. I think that, you know, potentially that's that's overcome because we've already agreed that there's going to be no access at the back of our property. And again, to the to the extent that that their one B proposal referenced, I think, railroad, that's that's not on our project site, so it wouldn't be within the board's jurisdiction. And then the the second comment dealt with the the Meadowbrook neighbors asking for a restriction or a condition that the permit be subject to approvals. And then it listed a slew of boards or advisory boards and and state departments. And here too, what we said was that well, there are there are a few reactions that we have to it. First, with respect to the water and sewer, the board, the zoning board isn't authorized to to grant or condition the water and sewer lines that would be extended from Framingham and Natick respectively. And further, that the advancement of the water and sewer lines, it's kind of being the lead of that's being taken by Pulte Homes in connection with the the state regulatory bodies that would oversee the approval. And again, the zoning board doesn't have an ability to put put in position on on Pulte Homes here. Third, the we'd already agreed that a condition and and one of the typical conditions that a comprehensive permit is a more global one that basically says that the project is going to comply with all state and federal regulations or, you know, state, regional and general regulations. And and we would agree to such a condition rather than putting in a number of different permitting agencies or even advisory boards that may or may not be applicable. I think this this catch-all language serves the purpose. And then the the fourth item that we had on their second comment, the the Meadowbrook Road neighbors had suggested not only a desire for them to have a water line down down their road, but a sewer line as well. And kind of there's there's two parts to that of our reaction to that request. First, with respect to the water line, it's not within the the permitting, the the board's comprehensive permitting authority to to make any such requirements. And instead, it's it's part of, I believe, what would be the intermunicipal agreements. And earlier hearing here, Board Select Member George Moore had 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 spoken up and he had said that there were including provisions within an intermunicipal agreement that a water line should be made available to the Meadowbrook in the future, you know, if if their wells become non-viable. And so our our point is, we respect the Meadowbrook neighbors, you know, desire to have that come to fruition, but this isn't the the place in the forum to to make that request. And then with respect to the sewer line, my understanding is that's never been discussed for sewer line for the Meadowbrook residents. And again, this isn't quite the forum for them to put forward that request. And then if I can move on to the their third their third comment. And that dealt with the they've asked that peer review be employed to analyze impacts of blasting on the general the impacts of blasting either on the general chemical plume or just manganese in general as as it may affect wetlands. And this would be asking for a peer review of substantive issue after the issuance of a permit would be a a post-permit review, a condition subsequent, which is not permitted under under chapter 40B. And, you know, the board is permitted to, within the comp permit, to designate individuals or or boards that have like appropriate expertise to review like a final plan for consistency with the board's decision. It doesn't have the authority to require new studies, review of new studies on a broad cloth after the close of the hearing. And so we pointed that out, and I think that one of the lead cases I referenced is the Adit Cash views case in Amesbury on that point. And then just kind of a as a practical point, I I think that with respect to the blasting and any concerns that it's already been addressed that I, I think that with respect to the blasting and any concerns that it's already been addressed that the, what we're proposing really is that the, the buildings themselves are going to be slab on grade. There's not going to be any basements. And so any ledge that's going to be removed, it's, it's, it's going to be limited and that there are protections in place, specifically under the Mass Department of Fire Services requires that the contractors be licensed. And then the local, the local fire department would issue a permit to blast. And so those are regulated under five twenty seven CMR. And so we think that concerns about blasting are adequately regulated through these state regulations. And that the request for a condition subsequent regarding additional study work and review of that by peer review is not permitted under forty B. The fourth request that was made of the board was for a condition to defer construction until remediation of the general chemical. And, and here too, we think that this is overstepping somewhat the, the role of the zoning board. And the applicant has previously stated and continues to state that no construction is going to start prior to September twenty twenty one. And the, the way that the request in the neighbor's letter was written, it was unclear whether it could apply to just the immediate. I think it was forty percent remediation or whether more globally. But I, I think the point of it is though, that the this project shouldn't be tied to another state body's remediation of a twenty one E site that's, you know, a Framingham twenty one E site. There's just while the board has authority to conditions this project, as, as the court said, and I referenced the Amesbury case, the local zoning board's powers to impose conditions is not all encompassing. And we, we view somewhat that this request to time the construction of this project on remediation of general chemical oversteps the, the power that forty B has intended to give local zoning boards. And then the last item, we, we previously had addressed this, I think, in, in prior hearings, but there was a request that was made that a permanent bond be posted both by, based on Sherburne and Pulte Homes. And, you know, knocking off the first one first, Pulte Homes isn't for the zoning board. So I don't think there, there would be any ability. As to a requirement for a permanent bond as to the developer of this project. The the, the Housing Appeals Committee has, has pretty clearly and, and very recently actually reiterated its position on this and that the board's ability to seek a, a performance guarantee or a bond has to be tied into an existing local bylaw regulation. And and here, there is no local bylaw or regulation that would authorize a permanent bond. And, and, and so broadly worded that, that they, they requested a permanent bond. You know, pretty much i- if, if if there's an increase to the water table and or flooding from the Meadowbrook pond or destruction to property, that's pretty broadly worded request. And I'm not aware of any local regulation that could support the posting of a bond. And so without kind of that local regulation, the Board of Appeals doesn't have the authority to just require the imposition of a bond, especially one that has been requested to be in perpetuity. It's not limited to time. There's no condition that it would ever expire. So again, I, I reference the board to two of the HAC's latest decisions from March fifteenth, twenty twenty one, the, the Wayfinders decision as well as Waste Farm. And I think that is, is a quick summary of our
Okay, so Mr. Thompson, Ms. Wiedemeyer, you're just about to get your equal time. So, so get ready. One, one jurisdictional point I do want to disagree with you on respectfully, Ms. Kiefer, is that I think I don't, in a number of spots, you already said the board doesn't have any jurisdiction on these issues. I think we do have subject matter jurisdiction because you're asking us to waive related local regulations. However, I, I, I think I'm, the extent of our power under that jurisdiction may very well be limited. And we may very well not be able to do the things that the letters are asking us to do, but I, the, the concept of us being able to look at water and sewer is not not completely unrelated to some of what you're asking for waivers. So I, I just, I, I note that and, and, but I, but I respectfully understand that what powers we have may be pretty limited under those circumstances.
Right. And I guess I should, should have clarified to say that with the specific water line and sewer line extensions, that, that's not a local permit that is subsequent to the forty B. So sorry if I
To find point only lawyers would appreciate, so. Unfortunately, there aren't that many of them on the call. All right. Ms. Wiedemeyer, Mr. Thompson, what do you think of all that?
The returning.
Okay, so I'll just, I'll call Stephanie's protocol and just sort of go in order of, of the, of the comments.
That'd be great.
So on the first one, you know, I appreciate the distinction that is made that Pulte handles some things and sometimes they don't handle things. So I'll just, there's a, a small point at the bottom that I really feel that there's a very small ask to put up a gate before construction begins and before this is permit, finally permitted, or whatever the right words are, but before construction begins. Because fences make good neighbors and I don't think the town of Sherburne needs the burden of, of policing this. And I think to install you know, taking this one at a time, the gate that is the responsibility of based on pre-construction is is a pretty small ask and it, it just kind of make, makes a good neighbor and keeps people honest and so that is our request there.
Mr. Chairman, if I could comment on that?
Well, you know, let, let, let's let her finish and, and then we'll loop back. Stephanie finished, so please proceed.
Okay. On the second point, and I appreciate that I was quoting the MWRA, so I, I got lost in the words on that. But just to translate it to English, we would like to condition having all these approvals for water and sewer pre-construction. In other words, you can't put a shovel in the ground until you have the MWR, the DEP, Framingham, Natick, whatever's needed, who's ever doing it, Pulte is doing it fine. But it needs to be in place before ground is broken and that I think that's the point on that one. And I, I had a sidebar, some of you know, with the McDowell's through Rick. Following up in a comment that we had in exchange earlier about a guesstimate for the cost to run pipe down Meadowbrook Road, which I have no idea if it's ten thousand dollars or ten million dollars and the McDowell's, you know, I understand that it's difficult to, to do that because you have to do soil testing and everything. But all I'm looking for is kind of a magnitude, somewhere between ten thousand and ten million, I assume is right. But does anyone have like, put me in a ballpark there of what it is?
Well, I, I'm not a construction expert. The applicant declined to speculate about this, as I think is there right here. You know, I would be very surprised if that was under a million dollars. Call in.
Okay, so roughly
But, but you know, I, I doubt it's ten million, but you know, we all know, we all know from the library that there are surprises in every construction job. It's not ten thousand dollars. I can almost guarantee you that.
Okay, all right. So I, I mean, I think the comments here are that a million dollars for, we'll, we'll just use that number for twelve neighbors is, you know, a lot. And we're asking to do this now because the, the equipment is already here. It's going to be a lot less expensive to do it when everything is going on. And I don't see how the neighbors can just install, decide they're going to install a pipe down the road. I don't know that Sherburne can do it because we're not, we're like a Title V community. We don't really have you know, pipes that we put down. And so if we do it now, all the permitting, whatever needs to be done is in place. And you know, the cost sharing, the reason I drew Pulte into it, it was to sort of say, based on didn't want to do it. So I put based on the town and Pulte can work amongst themselves to determine what is, what is fair here. And, and I think you know, I, I, I also, obviously the, the main point of it is that people aren't harmed. If there is, I mean, I know you're, we'll get to blasting in a second, but there will be blasting by your team member, I think, Pulte. And that is going to be very disruptive. And I don't, we had a TRC report four years ago, which said is a very, very bad area to blast because of the general chemical plume. And so if our wells are wrecked and people continue to drink their water until they test it, it, it's not just a little problem. It, it's a huge problem. This stuff is highly toxic. And so to solve the problem now is better than, you know, just some terrible results and probably terrible litigation for the town. And I don't know. Anyway, all right, moving on.
Blasting might have been next on your, on your list.
Great, yeah, number three. Okay. So we asked for peer review of blasting in light of the manganese issues in town and general chemical back in early December at that CBA meeting. And at the time, the response was, we're not going to do blasting. And so this EBA said, okay, we don't need to send it to peer review because there's not going to be blasting. But now it comes back, well, there may be some blasting and the Board of Health has a very specific threshold for blasting. I think it's ten cubic feet or whatever. And I, I don't know. Start to raise eyebrows and cause problems, I guess, at that level. And so I, I I feel that, okay, you can't condition it. So then if there is any possibility of blasting, then you need to go back to peer review now. So you don't get tangled in no peer review. You know, it's a catch twenty two. And so I think either you get the peer review now, or you just say there's absolutely no blasting. It can't be well, there'll be blasting, but we don't have to do, we don't have to have a good hard look at that of the effects of it. So my suggestion is to go back to peer review if there's going to be any blasting on issues of manganese and general chemical. Section four, delay remediation. This relates to my earlier point that there should be no, no construction, there should until the water and the sewer approvals are obtained and whatever the timing of that is and I appreciate that the zoning board maybe obviously doesn't have control of the cleanup. And, and Stephanie, I know we've had a miscommunication about this before, but I really only mean the current effort. There's a forty percent remediation going on like pre-work going on now and should be started in June. And I don't know exactly. I think it's a few months long. So the timing may, may work out well for you, but I think, I think that the DEP may have plenary control over all of this and may not want blasting. Because I understand there is ledge like four to six, where you're putting in the pipe, there's ledge four to six feet under the, under the street. So so I, I, I think it's a very modest request considering the the nasty impact of it. And, and finally, the bond and you know, I guess I, I would tie in the water sewer bond issues altogether as to, I think there's no doubt in my mind that if both of these projects go in, there's going to be water sewer flooding for our neighborhood, for the Natick neighborhood. It's a very, very high water table here. I think our well is only twenty five feet. It been, it's very, there's a lot of water and our backyards flood. So I think, however you want to slice it, there needs to be some sort of accountability for putting in these projects and the town at, at the expense of you know, a, a small neighborhood. And I, I think you know, this EBA's charge is to look out for the best interests of the town and, and its totality, but that includes, you know, all of its citizens. So I think I've and, and also Stephanie, yes, I did put a broad request in there and I, I would be quite amenable to removing the words in perpetuity, which I think is a legal problem anyway. And, and narrowing it to that, to what language you might suggest.
Thank you. Roy, you're about to get your equal time, so get ready. But, but before we go there, I just wanted to point out a couple of practical things. Remember in all of this that our ability to acquire things off-site from this developer is extremely limited under the statute. And it doesn't matter if the off-site thing is only ten thousand dollars or a million dollars, or if it's more efficient to put it in now. We don't have the right to make them do it if, if it's not directly related to something that they're asking for from us. And, and, and as to the blasting, manganese, my recollection, the hearings are taped, so I could be wrong. I don't think they said there would be no blasting. I think they said they expected very little blasting because of the, the slabs. And I think they still expect that, but they can speak for themselves. I have a project in my neighborhood right near my house, Gene, where they're going to be blasting the side of a big hill off to put in a house. And I suggest you do what I did. Test your well water now. Send it out. It only costs two hundred bucks and then you have the results. Because then if a year from now it's filled with manganese, you have to clean test to begin with. That's just a practical approach because I, I, I agree with you that manganese contamination and, and how it results from dynamiting or what is a, is a science in its infancy and we don't know all the answers yet. So test now and then you'll have it in your pocket. All right, Roy, now you're ready. That tee up. What do you got to say for yourself?
I was just going to offer one thing. I know there's a concern about this gate. We really can't put the permanent gate until the road is put in. That, you know, the access road for the fire department. But if it makes everyone feel better, we'd be more than happy to put in a temporary gate till that road is built.
I, I think Being requested is, is at Gray Road and therefore off-site.
Oh, we can't, that's, we can't touch. That's not our purview. I thought you meant the temporary gate on our property.
Yeah. That's just, sorry to interrupt you, but yeah, that's correct. There's two gates. There's one between the two properties and that's all we're talking about here.
Okay, got it. All right. So a temporary gate could work for you then.
We're, we're happy to do that.
Thank you.
Great, great solution. Thank you all. All right. Roy, you've got the floor. Keep going.
I'm good. I, I agree with Stephanie's comments at this point.
All right. Now, one of the proposals in Stephanie's letter had been that the project shall comply with all applicable state and regulations. One of the things I thought I heard Gene asking for was that those permits be pulled before the project is started. Stephanie and Roy, what can, what can you do for us on that? I mean, obviously you're not going to just start building before you have any of the permits.
Well, typically we would have obviously lease foundation permits at minimum, state and local permits. The one permit, if we ever need it, which I don't know, we The one permit, if we ever need it, which I don't know, we would, we wouldn't have a blasting permit because we're not going to know if we need to blast. So I think, you know, we're hoping not to, but if we do have some minimal blasting, that would be something we would have to understand once we have excavated the site.
So could you live with a condition that said, you can't have a CO until you comply, until you have all those permits and have complied with all those regulations?
Well, we can't have a CO to the buildings are totally complete.
That's my point. That would give you some flexibility, but also give her some, uh, some, some comfort that of course what you really want is a CO so you can start renting apartments and, and getting some cash flow from it. And i- i- if she knows that you don't get any cash flow until all those permits are in hand, that, that may provide some comfort.
I, I don't see why that'd be a problem because we can't get a CO unless we do.
Right. Stephanie, that's, um,
That's, yeah, that's standard sort of, that would be good.
Okay, um, yeah, I, I, the, the problem is that deferring construction until general chemical has done even the 40% or requesting bonds or requiring offsite improvements. We're, as, as, I'm afraid Stephanie did her job well inside of the right cases. We, we don't have the right to do that um, under, under the statute. And unfortunately, the statute does not direct us to look out for the best interest of the towns and all of its neighborhoods. It says, look out for the best interest of the state in, in providing affordable housing in balance with the, with, with the rights of the town. And then of course, the same statute puts a pretty heavy thumb on one side of the balance. Which we've said before, we, we didn't write the statute. We don't like it, but we're obliged to implement it. Mr. Fitch, I don't know if there's a better answer to any of that. You're much smarter than I am. You're a litigator. Surely you've got something to say.
Um, well, you're kind to suggest that, but I don't. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Bresnahan has his hand up.
I just want to kind of piggyback on, um, what Jean said a little bit and kind of throw my two cents in as a neighbor and in support of a bunch of these items. Uh, first, the gate, I appreciate you guys willing us to do that. That's just the main thing we want to prevent is any construction vehicles for either project accessing the site down Meadowbrook. I mean, my kids are biking on it all the time. We all know when there's a couple, a couple hundred guys on site working. It's really hard to control in and out unless there's, you know, structure in place to prevent that. So that's, that's the main point of that. It's just we want no construction activity going down Meadowbrook. And then with, with relation to the water and sewer, I, I think the, the main thing that we're looking for is, it seems like Pulte is um, going to be installing these water and sewer lines. And I assume there's some sort of financial arrangement between you and Pulte to, to cover the cost of that. We would want some kind of funds allocated as part of this project to cover us in case of an issue with either project, because that's obviously linked between the two. And who knows what that number is right now, but, um, running those lines in parallel down Meadowbrook is, uh, is imperative to, to giving us, you know, comfort knowing that if something does happen that we're covered and we're not going to have to, you know, like you said, go to litigation or whatever to, to fix the mess.
Okay, I, I, I appreciate that, but at, at, but at the risk of repeating myself, this board doesn't have the power to require this developer to set aside money to put in water and sewer lines for you.
Right, but you, you actually just mentioned you do have the power to not give them any of the waivers they requested, which took about a half an hour or so.
We, we have the right to not give them those waivers if we've got a really good reason that outweighs the need for, for local housing. And that's why I said, if we, if we knew that there was something that they were doing that was, uh, evidence of, that it's more likely than not that there's a threat to the public health and welfare, then we can deny them the waivers. Otherwise hack will force us to grant the waivers.
I think there's a reasonable argument to be made that these projects could have significant impact on our neighborhoods.
Or remember, you can't say these projects, you have to say this project.
Well, they're, they're tied by the sewer and water and admittedly they said Pulte's putting in these lines that they're going to be utilizing. So you have to build them together.
Right, but, 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 but hack will hold this board's feet to the fire and say, where is the evidence that this project? That it's more likely than not that the construction of this project will cause a serious risk to, or material, I forget the language, the state of, of, of the case, a, a material risk of, uh, risk to health a- and safety.
And I, I would argue the evidence would, would lie in any financial arrangement between based on impurity for these water and sewer lines. Which I'm sure there's something.
Okay. Um, I'm trying to see if somebody, somebody's got something up in the chat. Questions, costs. I, I, I'm sorry, there's a question came up in the chat. I can't see who it's from. Oh, oh, I'm sorry. Sean Clean is, this is, this is from Jean. Sean Clean is now on. Uh, Sean, if you can hear me. There was a request earlier to sort of for a back of the envelope number to pull water and sewer down Meadowbrook, assuming it were there in the street at Coolidge. And I said, I'm not a construction guy, uh, but I, and, and, and Jean was saying, well, is it, is it 10,000 or 10 million dollars? And I said, well, I can almost guarantee it's more than 10,000. My guess was it's near a million dollar job, but, but, but I don't know. And you are a construction guy, Sean. So if you're willing to give us your guess, give us your guess.
Well, Mike, can you hear me?
Yep.
I'll entertain the water. And the only number that's been thrown around in town was a million bucks a mile for water. And, and I think that includes, I didn't come up with that number. That's just a number that the downtown water district people used. Just as a general number. Obviously there's a million factors that go into that. That would probably include the taps towards the houses. Sewer, I have no clue. It, it's pretty hard to do sewer off of just guessing, but I don't understand why you'd entertain a conversation about sewer.
Right.
That's, that's not something that's going to be affected. Water is, um, the, the, probably the most expensive thing is the tap at the, uh, at the main that's going by, because the, the main will be going by Meadowbrook. It's going to cross, it's going to cross the brook, the culvert, and then it's going to go by the end of Meadowbrook. The hardest part of that is putting in a live tap, if it were, if you were to go back and do it later.
Right.
And, and I would bet if people wanted to, that's something they might get the contractor to do when they're running by the road.
Force line or gravity line, do you know?
What's that?
You know, force line or a gravity line, do you know?
The water?
I'm sorry, I'm talking about sewer, I think.
No, I, I can't even entertain sewer. I think there's going to be force then gravity. But, but I don't know. I, I know the original design out of Natick had them going gravity into a neighborhood and then having to help them with the pump station. But I think they changed that when they, when they're designing to go all the way to the end of Coolidge and then down speed. So I, I don't know. I can't even make a guess on that.
We, we, we understand you're making educated guesses. We appreciate your educated guesses anyway. Jean Woodamire, looks like you had a question on that. Or did I miss, misunderstand? Uh, you're muted, you're muted, ma'am.
I think there was a question. I think there's a question about sewer. Uh, and I, I just, the point about that is that, I mean, I've been involved in these things since 2016, 2017. And over and over, people say that you can't have an imbalance between water and sewer. You can't just pump water in and, and take, take the water off site or, or vice versa. And because of our high water table, that's why we're asking for the sewer, um, as well, because we would just, I don't know, we would be flooding ourselves. We'd be flooding Natick. If we, if we added a whole bunch of water to the street without a, a sewer, um, you know, in, in balance. That's so that, that was the thought.
I don't understand. You'd be using, it's the same amount of houses. It's they'd be using the same amount of water they're using now.
We're taking it from our house and bringing it to our house as opposed to using our own water and circulating within our property.
Ricky, want a different comment from that?
Sure, please.
I could speak to that someone. The, there's, there has been discussions for years about the net effect, but it's on a much, much larger scale. Uh, in other words, if we were to allow them to, to pump 10, 15, 20,000 gallons a day, either out of the aquifer or into it, that would have a massive effect on, on, on everyone's groundwater or on everyone's wells. The small scale of each house on Meadowbrook that might have five to 700 gallons a day on Title V flows into the septic would hail in comparison to the, to the water levels that rise and fall with the Sudbury River levels, uh, from Meadowbrook. So I understand the concern, but I don't, I don't think it's the same. It, it was more dictated towards bringing in tens of thousands of gallons into the development if they then surcharged it in as a recharge.
Okay, thank you. Much better answer than mine. No question. Okay, I'm looking for additional hands on the butter's, uh, letter. Okay, I don't think I see any. Okay, um, board members, further questions or discussion on the butter's letter and the applicant's response?
I, I don't have any question. Questions or concerns?
Okay. Okay, um, been through the waiver list. I think the other thing that was some new, sorry, good pen. That was new back and forth was, uh, the conservation commission memo of the, uh, 28th. Uh, that was responded to by Tetra Tech on the 29th. The, there's a follow-up cons comm memo on May 6th about fills and stumps. And the applicant responded to all of that on May 7th. And then the cons comm finally followed up again on May 12th. Michael, I know you have your hand up, but first I want to make sure, do I have the bidding correct? Is there something I missed in that chain, Stephanie or anybody else?
I think you covered it.
Okay, Michael Lesser, go ahead.
Actually, I put it up late. I was trying to just follow up on your previous discussion as I tuned back in about whether, even though you have no jurisdiction to the neighbors issue. I thought I would just highlight again, maybe Sean's comment that in terms of that water connection of whether the applicant would consider, uh, doing the kind of, uh, tap at Meadowbrook. So that the, uh, so that the cost would be a lot less if something was to come later because of the disruption that it would cause if, uh, if they were going to do something later with going with water down Meadowbrook. Whether that's something that the applicant would even consider. Since I, it seems that you can't, that the ZBA has limited say to ask for that, uh, sort of valve, so to speak, to be put in there. But, but the comment, whether the applicant is willing to, uh, consider that option. Before we get to the conservation, I'm saying that is just a resident.
Got it. For the applicant.
Uh, Roy McDowell speaking. Um, it is a reasonable request, however, I would say that it's something really that would need to be requested of Pulte. Because Pulte is the one putting in the water line. And I think that, uh, that could be requested of them. And, uh, it is correct. It's much less expensive to put it in when you're drink, laying a dry line as opposed to a charged line.
And, and, and proving that I'm not paying much attention to the Pulte process. But I'll ask Marion, because you're, uh, uh, chair of the planning board, are they through their process with you already?
Yeah, here I am. Uh, no, they're, they're not. They're with the, uh, the elderly affordable development.
Yes.
As of now, they are still at the preliminary plan process point that was approved by town meeting in 2017.
But they haven't come back to you for the special permit yet?
No, they have not.
Got it, okay.
Sir Chairman, if I may, from our discussions of them, it sounds like that is coming along pretty soon. That application to the planning board.
Okay, I, but I just wanted to follow up on, on Mr. Roy McDowell's point that the discussions with the planning board are going to keep going. They're not, they're not over yet.
And Mr. Chairman, I'm happy to bring this up with Pulte tomorrow, although it should be a discussion, probably the planning board should have with them.
So noted, thank you.
All right. All right, back to where we were. Mr. Lesser, did you want to say anything on the bid and ask on conservation commission? It sounded like, as I read the papers, you were pretty much of all of one mind at the end of the day. Based on your letter of, your, your email of the 12th and the applicant's letter of the 7th. But, but what am I missing? Where are you apart?
Well, there's just the specific, there's a number of small issues. As they, I think, as the applicant's letter said, there's just working out some details about what conditions would be include, would possibly be included in the ZBA permit. Related to, for example, uh, the deicing, the snow disposal, something, and the lawn, that there are issues that we suggested some things. Tetra Tech said, yes, something should be there. The applicant said, yes, we'd like to work out something together. Um, and whether this is the setting in which we hammer out some of those little specifics or not. I'm not quite sure what the process is and when the hearing's closing. As to whether you, we hammer it out in this context or we wait for some replies.
For the chair, we have had Stephanie look at this and we've discussed with her. And if the chair would like, she could comment on this letter. We got 45 minutes before the hearing.
Certainly, um, but let me just try to, uh, respond to, uh, Michael's implicit ask for where the, where the dividing line for the hearing being open and closed is because it's a good, fair question. Certainly if, uh, the parties had agreed on the broad outlines or the substance of a condition. And then we're working out language during the board's deliberation. I think that's allowed. Uh, what can't come in after we've closed the hearing is, wait, here's my new study that I just got from wetlands plant expert, Mr. Smith. And I'd like to put that on the table. Can't take new evidence. That, 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 that's the real closure on it. And we can't bring up new topics that haven't been discussed before, but where, we're talking about the exact wording of conditions, uh, there is room. I believe, Mr. Fitch, um, for us to, to, to discuss that, uh, in our, in our deliberation sessions, which, which are open. Everybody gets to watch. For all the fun that is, not. Stephanie, go ahead.
Okay. So with that being said, um, I think that there were, um, somewhat, again, we didn't have a, a large amount of time to take a look at, um, the commission's last response, but there were a, a few things that we can probably condition around, but I, I think that there are certain things that, um, maybe exceeding, um, what's permitted. And I, I don't have the letter written for me, but on page two, there was a, a statement there relative to, changes to the deicing and that, um, that the, there be, there's a suggestion that there be a condition that the applicant go back to the conservation commission for, um, approval for any changes to deicing. And I think that, you know, as I referenced previously, the comprehensive permit is the comprehensive permit. It can't be subject to saying, okay, now you have to go get approval from another local board for something. So, um, you know, maybe I misread what, what the commission was suggesting, but it sounded like they were asking for the ZBA to include a, a condition subsequent within the decision. So, you know, we would have a concern obviously with that. And then I, I think that there was a reference to, could the, uh, deicing agents be, be stored in, in a covered area? I, I think that we can work around, um, that, that concern, um, through a condition. And then also on page two, under their habitat measures, there was a suggestion that, um, the conservation commission wanted to further review the, uh, the proposed, the two proposed wetland crossings and then other habitat issues, um, and or habitat measures. And it was really unclear what that was, what that was about. Um, I, I think that if there is an issue relative to the wetlands crossings or the habitat measures, um, they, they probably should be discussed within this context if the the conservation commission had them. Um, and and I don't know that. The the permit should be subject to, and I appreciate that. The permit is subject to state permitting, and if there's authority for the Conservation Commission under the Wetlands Protection Act, obviously, but. The way it was worded, it was just unclear that it seemed that it was a local concern that. They wanted an ability to um review after the fact and and as we talked previously, after the fact, it's in the right time to do it, it's here and now. Um. And then lastly, um, from what I remember, there was a reference to the landscaping plan, and and I think that we had talked about this at the at the April hearing. Um, the the request that there be some sort of demarcation, whether it be a fence or or some sort of marking. At the boundary of of the buffer zone, and I think that um and Matt may want to chime in here, but um we have stated that that can be problematic and that. Um. If if there's something to kind of demarcate the. The uh, the area that's being impacted, okay, but but just to have those in there, it's it's. One, it's part of a maintenance issue, but two, it's also not very clear, because if you have the buffer zone, but we've already had a waiver for certain. Um, work within that buffer zone, then you have this like. Line, whether it's stones or some sort of fencing or something, that's that's. It's just creating a little bit of a problem, so I don't know, Matt, do you want to pop in on that one, because I think you did speak at that last hearing?
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Please.
Okay, so yeah, I just to reiterate, I think what I um have have mentioned before is that the uh the yards are minimal behind the buildings and then we s- because of the uh. The way the grading works out, we slope down to existing grade. Once we get beyond the yard, so I think just the slope and the fact that the vegetation won't be um, is not proposed to be manicured beyond that slope. That in itself, I think will create a a. The 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 division between the the maintained area where people will will go. Versus the the area that's that's let uh to go back to nature, so. Um, we certainly don't think a fence is warranted or necessary. Um, it's not something I I don't believe that the the applicant is willing to entertain. Um, if if anything, I think uh perhaps some kind of markers at at certain intervals. Uh, but again, I don't think that's necessary based on the proposed terrain and the proposed uh distinct. Um, line between what's maintained and what's not maintained vegetation, so I I don't even think that's necessary. Uh, in this case, and just to reiterate, I mentioned it before, and I believe Stephanie just did, if any demarcation is conditioned. We would request that follow the the limit of of work or or even the the limit of maintained area, not necessarily the fifty foot N A Z. Um, which kind of weaves its way in and out of of the various areas that are to be maintained, so. Uh, it would be more um. E- effective, I think, if if it were to follow the the limit of the maintained area.
You know, I'm trying to remember the Tetra Tech letter, which I'm sure I have in my in my email, and I did read, but I I thought they were comfortable. Um, with the resolutions that you and they had worked out on this topic. But I misread them.
They were comfortable with all the resolutions and everything.
So I certainly speaking only for myself. To the extent that the Conservation Commission differs with peer reviewer, um, we will have to weigh the peer reviewer uh. W- w- we will have to wait, weigh their um, weigh their advice, uh certainly i- in terms of. Saying something outweighs the need for local housing, uh the regional need for for affordable housing, saying we went against the advice of our own peer reviewer, we would want to be. Speaking for myself, I would want to be really, really sure it was a very big issue. Um.
So would I.
Sorry, Jonathan?
I said, so would I.
Right. Um, so, um. All right, Michael, very quickly, though.
Uh, sure, I'll just go, I'll start with the last one since it's fresher, as to the. As to the markers, I think the it's maybe more subtly worded, so it didn't come across, but yes, as to Matt's point that. Yes, we're talking about the protected buffer area, we're not talking about something that would just demarcate. The, you know, alterations on, for example, it's really just marking the areas that are to be protected. Um, and and our experience shows that without some sort of marking. Um. That I don't think this is a big issue, but I still think it's an important issue, given that what the the use of the buffer zone that. Uh, that without having some sort of clear markers of some sort, whether it's posts occasionally along the way. If not a fence, that it makes a big difference in terms of the uh maintenance that's done by landscape companies. We continually find that these kind of things are exceeded, or they or they have sort of landscape creep. Um, and things like that, so I don't think it's a big costly issue uh overall or or a big burden. But that uh it will come up again, obviously, in our in our permitting, but uh, but I would say that it's a uh. That it's important and not a hopefully a big burden on the on terms of that kind of demarcation of the areas that are to be protected. Um, and we're flexible about how that is done or what way. Going back to some of the earlier points, I guess, to the extent that some of this stuff can be, the wordsmithing will be worked out later. In your process, but I'll come back to issues uh on the uh. On the deicing, I think that um, trying to think what else, what Stephanie said, there was something there about. Um. Well, I guess the question is, is whatever, whether you get the peer reviewed to weigh in on the idea of uh of some guidance about how that is done.
I I I think the odds of us going back out to the peer reviewer aren't on any topic now are extraordinarily low.
Okay, they brought up a topic that they did not address. Um, and so therefore it seems to be a gap. Of they suggest that there should be a conditioning on quantity, and they don't say, and they were silent on what that should be. Um, so that's why I I bring it up, it came from there. Um, and whether the, and in terms of the wording, the specific wording of what the icing materials are used or not used. Whether that's just going to be subject to the back and forth when you do your wordsmithing uh of conditions. And or versus whether that's an issue to wrestle out, work with here, because again. They uh, the Tetra Tech says that, yes, we should have something, but they do not specifically put something. Uh, in their document about that on the on the choice of deicing materials. Um.
Well, M- Michael, in terms of the the scope of discussion. To the extent that in the discussion of the board's decisions, people are talking about things that are uh customary, common. Um, and reasonable for projects of this size and scale, that's probably going to be in the zone of uh. Uh, of of discussion, to the extent that the Conscom says, wait, we have a special way of doing it that nobody else does. That's an uphill battle and and it better hit the table right now.
I guess I would like to think that most of the things stated here are uh are quite straightforward and not out of the ordinary. Um, and uh so.
I'm not saying they aren't, I'm just.
Opinion, that's that, but that, that, as one knows, the devil's in the details and uh. Oh, and so I don't know, it'll come back to bite us later, but these are certainly not any of the things that we raised uh. About uh raised here on uh on the deicing, on the snow disposal areas. Um, and on the uh Lord and lawn garden and landscaping maintenance. Those are not all things that are out of the ordinary, and uh we could, some of it we'll be dealing with later. Um, they can point out whether they think anything is particularly dramatic. Um, as to the wildlife habitat thing that's said there that. We weren't requesting that they or that they would, oh yeah, actually, it was coming, actually, that was the point I wanted to make, the um. That the question then is the wording on the deicing, where it seemed that there was some concern that we were asking for f- for further approval. Of any changes, whether that's basically conditioned, whether that's a condition. If something, they want to do something different, because this came from Tetra Tech, that uh the applicant should be able to come back. Uh, if there's some issues around the uh the deicing procedure and protocol. And if if they need something, some change, whether maybe they have to come back to then to the ZBA. Um, I mean, we'll have this again probably in the uh order.
A- a- and that's that, that's correct, that that's how that would typically work. Is that they would have their permit if they said, wait, I can't live with this condition because it's too difficult, I want to change it, they do have to come back to us.
Fine, then I have no problem with that being part of, instead of whether it comes back to us, um, I don't think um. And fine, then I, we overstepped in that sense of the process by coming back to the commission versus going back to the ZBA. As to any changes in the deicing issues. Um, then uh, yeah, and the wildlife again was uh, we were just saying that basically we'll get more detail about that during the NOI process. Um, and so uh, and we appreciate that they put something in there, and we'll review it further then. Um, so in that case, it's the same thing with the landscape, as I said before, but that's where we're going, we have the jurisdiction under the state. To come back and review these things.
Right, and it and I think we're glad to say that what we're doing is without prejudice to your state rights, and if when we're writing this, we forget that, I know you'll raise your hand and remind us.
Yes, we have, we'll have fun when you stop putting.
That that that'll be, that'll be entirely fair. I will welcome that reminder.
Okay, so unless there's no, there's no noting that there's anything dramatically out of line and the and the things that we're talking about, then it could be dealt with later.
Mr. Chairman, if I can make a comment?
You may.
Uh, we're willing, we're willing to put in intermittent uh posts along the perimeter of those uh buffer zone areas to delineate. What is going to be the final a buffer of undisturbed area.
Appreciate it.
Yeah. Okay. Great, big help, thank you. All right. Um. Well, first of all, is there anything that happened since the twenty eighth that I haven't covered here, anybody? All right, it's like we got that. Uh, second, are there any new matters not previously discussed? That anybody wants to bring before the board while our hearing is still open? This is the last chance for that. Most of the people on the call are too young to remember Paramason, but there was an old TV show where the where the where the hero lawyer would always at the last second say, but wait. And he would have a surprise document or a surprise witness that would change everything. Um, and so if you have that surprise document or surprise witness. Um, speak now or forever hold your peace, I see Daryl Beardsley's hand up, uh, what stunning surprise do you have for us, Daryl?
Uh, hopefully not a surprise, but is this one I would make comments from the Board of Health?
Oh, yes, please, yes, please.
Uh, so nothing too surprising, I think, as was pointed out in the letter. The request for waivers to all of our regulations was very broad, but the Board of Health did feel it would be remiss. If it did not address all of our regulations, as we thought they might potentially apply to the project. At some point, and also, we wanted to include comments on things that. Again, domestic water supply that should not be part of this and some other topics, but. Just in the event that something changes between now and the. End of your writing the comprehensive permit, so that you would know that we would have comments and certainly be willing to work with you on those matters. We also very much appreciate that the applicant um has agreed. To some of the sections of our regulations, as as I had pointed out before, they're good practices and. Were things that we didn't think would be onerous for the project. Um, let's see.
D- Daryl, just before we leave that, you 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 touched on something, I want to make sure I wasn't misunderstanding you. Um, if there's a change in domestic water, as in they're going to go with wells instead of this public water supply, it's a full start over.
Yeah.
That is a fundamental, I I'm sure the McDowell's would agree with me that. As a complete nonstarter game changer, saying, wait, we've changed our minds, we're going to drill wells.
Okay, so the example I'll use instead that might be encountered is that bedrock disruption, because you don't know. Are trying to run in the the water and sewer lines, there might be a surprise. Um, and so again, very happy to hear that they're willing to do the notifications, provide the information about the blasting agent. And then if it gets to that, I do hope that uh the ZBA will consult with the Board of Health about. What we consider best practices, and we're deriving some of those from um academic and government. Uh, authorities who are in Connecticut and New Hampshire and elsewhere in the Northeast, where they have. Seen the similar kinds of problems that we have seen in Sherborne that coincide with bedrock disruption. And so there are practices such as not leaving after rock has been blasted. It's not left on the surface, or if it has to be for some period of time, it's covered so that the materials don't reach out of the um. The rock particles with the greater surface area, so again, we'll cross.
Wait, wait, before before we leave that, are those best practices written down somewhere in the possession of the Board of Health tonight?
Well, the way the Board of Health ordinarily operates is that we request that someone provide a plan, and then we review their plan for adequacy, so we have not.
That is, that isn't, that isn't answering my question. My question is, are the list of best practices written down somewhere right now?
Only in working documents that we have in terms of informing the Board of Health, but as a regulation, no.
All right, um, because we're trying to go is. No, what I, what I, what I need to, no, what I need to do is say. We we are hereby submitting, even though we're not handing it to you right now, um, our draft best practices, and we ask you to adopt those in your decision. Um, because then we can say, okay, you described to us what they were, and it's just a matter of transmitting the piece of paper. What we can't do is go back to you later.
Okay, so you need all of that upfront.
Correct. So m- my request would be that 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 you um. Uh, suggest to us that we include as a condition, all of your best practices for for blasting. Uh, that you're going to trans- transmit to us as promptly as possible, in the form they're now in, don't adopt new regulations, don't change anything, just in the form they're now in. Um, as soon as you can after this hearing.
Okay.
That would be great.
We will do that.
All right, that will be wonderful, because because we'd love to have the expertise, we just can't leave things open or come back to you afterwards.
Okay, uh, all right, sometimes. Sometimes issues are so complex, this one's not, but other issues are so complex that to specify all of that upfront could be difficult, but okay. Um, I just want to know.
Best practices materials you have on hand right now, that's all.
Okay, great. Uh, just a note for future reference, there was a section, I think it was um. Under the E H I R referring, there was a question about whether this project was a subdivision. But our regulation specifically says subdivision or project. Uh.
Um.
And. The other. Um, issue I just wanted to note is the. Uh, in the next to last paragraph in the letter from Stephanie. Reply from Stephanie, it talks about the I and I concerns. And I just wanted to highlight that the reason that's important, and as noted here, that that would be addressed. Because that is something that is a concern when installing. Water and sewer lines is that we also have neighbors' water supply lines in the area, and so. We were commenting on that because we are trying to protect the neighbors. Particularly their water supply lines.
Got it, but if I read your memo correctly, you were saying, okay, good, we want them to use best practices, and they have agreed to do that.
Yes.
All right, excellent.
All right, I'll get.
All right, wonderful, thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Um, Ms. Ms. Kiefer?
Just as one point of clarification relative to going back to um the the statements on on blasting and best practices. Um, we would like to see that, but a- as the board is probably aware that. Um, the project is subject to only those local rules and regulations that were in effect at the time of its application. Now, if if there's a proposal that there's conditioning that would be helpful, we can consider that, but in terms of. What the project is subject to, again, it's local rules and regulations in effect at the time of the application.
Right, yeah, I I think Stephanie makes an excellent technical point. That this is a suggested condition from the Board of Health as opposed to a regulation that's on their books now that's being asked to be waived. Hearing correctly?
Yes.
Yep, got it.
Of course, our regulation says that the applicant has to present something to the Board of Health that then it evaluates for adequacy, and that can't happen. So you're asking for information of what reference materials we would use when evaluating, because we're we were trying to offer flexibility because of the great differences of projects and therefore, but uh I, we will do our best to provide you with the information that we have.
That would be wonderful, thank you.
We have it, but you're not following the same process we would follow, so it's just different.
Okay, um. Other new matters or things I missed? That was a good catch, Daryl, thank you. I I I thought your issues had been discussed in the in in the letters, but good catch. Um. I don't see any hands, I don't see any chats. Um. Members. I think this is where we close the hearing. Let me discuss it, do you have any thoughts about that? Michael, one last time, but really, really, really.
So I couldn't tell whether Mr. Brezna, Brezna Hand raised his hand, that's all, I couldn't tell whether he was trying to raise his hand.
I did, I clapped by accident.
Okay, all right.
I I, but I wanted to raise my hand, I, one quick point, uh actually question with regards to, there was a back and forth last time about sidewalks down Coolwood Street, and we got a response from the applicant. Um, I just wanted to quickly address that and um I'm looking at the letter that uh they wrote and basically says that there's no existing sidewalk here currently, and it's not an issue with the town. And I, it's the Z B A's authority to I guess, rule on any any potential public safety matters. And although it's not an issue right now, because I'm not sure what the population of Coolwood Street is, it's probably fifty. If if that population rises to four or five hundred, uh I think that it could present a problem, and there could be a lot of traffic, kids, walkers, runners, bikers down Coolwood Street, and I I think that it's definitely worth looking into and considering a sidewalk, and I don't think it needs to be a paved curved sidewalk, I think even just a path uh with crushed stone through the woods or something like that, just so that it gives the the new residents and current residents um access down the road and and limits the pedestrian traffic on the road is definitely worth considering.
But but a- again, we are not allowed to require the applicant to make public offsite improvements.
I understand that, but there's there's also waivers they're asking of you, so I think asking some concessions of them.
E- e- even even as part of, I I I must not have explained our waiver process prop- properly. Even wh- while while the while the waiver of various uh safety things gives us the right to talk about some things, what we can say about it and what we can require is still constrained.
Understood.
So for example, we 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 could say, put a sidewalk across the front of the property, that's on their site.
Right.
But we can't make them put a sidewalk all the way down to Main Street.
I understand, but I I think it's worth having discussion, and to be honest, I think it's a worthy marketing tool for the property as well, and I, and for, you know.
And I I I hear you, but I I think the the applicant answered this a couple of times clearly, I'll give them one more time to to say it. Um, Mr. McDowell?
Well, I think we've addressed it in our letters, and it's it's an extremely cumbersome, expensive operation requiring uh some takings, requiring easements, uh relocation of wetlands, I mean, it's 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 a very significant and detailed thing to do, even if it's just a gravel path. And frankly, it's just something we can't afford to do with the current budget.
Okay. All right. Um. Any other new matters? Okay, uh members, where where are you on on closing the hearing or continuing it or are doing anything else?
Well, I think we should close the hearing. We've had a thorough discussion of all the issues. Uh, it's been a very I think thorough, comprehensive presentation made by uh the applicant and uh we got to move the process along.
I I I'd act with that, although I'd also say that um it's been a very thorough vetting of the uh of the concerns by the various boards and and neighbors and the butters, and I I want to compliment everybody for the uh demeanor that has pervaded these proceedings, because I think we've all seen proceedings where it didn't go quite as um in quite as cordial a manner. So certainly, personally, I appreciate that.
I agree.
Mr. Stafford, where are you, sir?
Uh, I would agree that it's so. We've we've adequately covered uh the issues and uh I would be comfortable with closing.
All right, well, I would entertain a motion to close the hearing on Coolidge Crossing.
I mean, we close the hearing on the Cool- Coolidge Crossing project.
I second that.
All right. Any further discussion? Commentary from the assembled multitudes? Well, maybe not multitudes, but twenty eight people have been listening to us patiently, so I'm I'm still grateful. Um, all right. All in favor of closing the hearing, say aye. We have to do it by roll call, Novak votes aye.
Stafford, aye.
Fitch, aye.
All right, the ayes have it unanimously. Thank you all for your time. I'm sure we'll see some subset of all of you in our deliberations. Um. Board members, unfortunately, are, is it forty-five days or forty days that we have, Stephanie?
Forty.
Forty days, our forty days will lie past. Um, we ought to set a time uh possibly two weeks out to be discussing um a a a decision. Uh I'm going to guess that uh Mr. McDowell is going to volunteer Ms. Kiefer to send us some provisions that she would like to see in the in in the in the decision. We're glad to review those, they're not binding on us.
Thank you.
Um. Sorry.
Thank you.
Um, other interested parties can submit drafts of conditions. Um so for example, if the conscom wants to write something, you can certainly look at that again. The pen, the pen is ours. Uh people are just making suggestions to us. Um but when could we meet again on this one? A gentleman and I really want to hear a date that starts with June.
June.
What about June second, Wednesday, June second?
I think, I think, you know, I think that's a good idea, because we 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 really won't have a whole lot of the drafting done by then, but it'll give us a good chance to talk about the outlines.
Okay.
Mr. Stafford, June second?
Yeah, I'm okay.
Let me just check my own, I'll hear since I'm finding out that I screwed up. Okay. Wednesday, June second, seven P M. Everyone who wants to watch us draft and doesn't have anything better to do is invited to do so. Thank you all for your time. I'd entertain a motion to adjourn tonight.
I move with the way you adjourn this meeting?
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor of adjourning? Aye, Novak votes aye.
Stafford, aye.
Fitch, aye.
All right, thank you all very, very much. Have a good and safe evening.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Good night.